Again, on property located at 6785 Thomsville Road. All of the information is presented before you. Staff is recommending option one, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept option one.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion?
What, how does, how does density impact?
Thank you. Thank you.
We've got already here that can answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from any commissioner?
My question was.
Oh, Mr. Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, excuse me, briefly, what's the density impact of what we're accepting?
Commissioners, this would be a slight upzoning. It would allow an additional four residential units above what is currently allowed. So we're talking, you know, four units or about 6,400 square feet of non-residential use. So it's, it's not a massive upzoning, but it's a, it's a little bit of a zoning.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, District Commissioners, please, if I'm okay.
I'm sorry, what?
If the District Commissioner is pleased, I'm pleased.
You're pleased. Thank you. No other comments? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Caban?
Aye.
Aye. With Commissioner Maddox out of chamber. It passes. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this two, item number 26, is a, the first and only public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from light industrial to single-family detached. Again, the recommendation is before you. We have the developer's representative here. Should you have any questions? However, again, staff is recommending option one.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept option one.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Minor, second by Commissioner Welch. Is there any comment?
Comment, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, staff, can you give us a report as to the environmental cleanliness of this area and whether or not humans would be susceptible to any ailments, respiratory, any other type? And I raise that, I raise that question in light of the fact that Attorney Ben Crump had a case, I believe over in the Port St. Joe area a few years ago, and the place was a, and they put affordable housing there, and the houses began to sink because it had been, God, I don't know if a landfill or something, but some industrial purpose. So transitioning an industrial piece of property to residential, is there any brownfieldness related to the current site, and will it be treated?
Commissioners, thank you. As of now, the analysis that we've done doesn't indicate that this will be a problem. Of course, as the development goes through the process and they would move from, this is the rezoning, looking at the actual use, to doing a site plan that would show exactly what they're proposing to build, they'd have to do more detailed analysis on that. And so at this point, don't have any concerns, but just rest assured that there are additional analyses that would have to take place before any residential development could occur.
What specific, in terms of the parcel 4767 of Capital Circle, where is that specifically?
That is south of Tram Road on Capital Circle. It's not touching Tram Road, but it's basically one property down from the road, property that touches.
It's in the elbow of the term.
It is.
Okay. And is it on the inside of Capital Circle? Is it on the outside of Capital?
It's on the outside of Capital Circle.
Outside, okay. That area down there now is, and it's going to turn that to residential?
Yes, Commissioner.
And what's sitting there now?
It's pretty much just an empty lot at the moment, but it is next to other properties that have gone on similar transition. So we see a general trend away from light industrial in this specific area to more commercial residential and retail uses and office uses.
Okay.
So this whole area is basically changing the character from industrial to more neighborhood-like uses.
Very good. Just concerned about toxic factors and human safety. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. County Administrator.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, may the record reflect that I voted in the affirmative in the, in.
Oh, item 25.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Item 25. Will you show an affirmative for Commissioner Maddox? Thank you. Number 27, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, item number 27, your final public hearing is the second and final public hearing on the federal fiscal year 2023 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Opportunity. Again, we are recommending options one and two to conduct the, the final public hearing to receive comments from the public on the draft application and also to authorize County Administrator to submit the application for CDVG to fund housing rehabilitation activities. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I'd like to entertain a motion for staff recommendation.
So moved.
Commissioner Maddox?
So moved, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Minor, thank you so much. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Proctor.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I watched the, the debate the other night, and Democratic nominee for president said that she intends to bring four million new houses, in particular for affordable housing. And to see this particular CDVG grant that seeks housing rehabilitation, I want to encourage our exploration of new grant opportunities after January 20th of next year in monies that will assist first-time home buyers in the programs that have been mentioned to come down the pipe to establish four million new homes. I wanted to encourage staff to be mindful of any policy changes, in particular if those have been projected by one of our candidates for president. There should be a pipeline that opens, so. And then I think also, speaking of the southeast part of our county, that it stands as a great area for further development for affordable housing and all of the federal properties that we have. President, the next president has a vision for affordable housing. I think a part of that, the president could convert federal lands for that purpose to be fulfilled. And when I see her, I definitely intend to share that thought and to make that request for Leon County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Same thing. Hearing none, be unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners, so much. Mr. County Administrator, we're back on your own business, item 22.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 22 is a request to schedule the first and only public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of Leon County Code to prohibit retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits, and to schedule that for December 10th, 2024. Commissioners, you may recall that before going to public hearing, you requested that staff provided analysis, which is before you. We are recommending option one. We do have one speaker on this item.
Thank you.
The speaker is Kate McFaul. Kate McFaul?
Is Ms. McFaul here?
Okay. Having said that, there are no further speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I'd like to entertain a motion, Commissioners.
So moved.
To staff recommendation. Commissioner Caban made the motion, second by Commissioner.
O'Keefe made the motion.
Oh, made the motion. Commissioner O'Keefe made the motion, second by Commissioner Maddox. Is there any discussion? Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Kate McFaul, who is here from the United States Humane Society, for bringing this to our attention. I'm looking forward to seeing this go through. It's good for citizens who are consumers, looking for pets here in Leon County. It's good for humane conditions for pets and dogs and cats and rabbits. It impacts lowering the population of animals that may end up in the shelter, and so I'm looking forward to this. As an aside, part of this report was just update on the animal shelter transition, and I want to give a shout out to the animal shelter staff who are working hard on their foster program and encourage anyone who's thought about it to sign up to foster from the animal shelter. You can do it for an afternoon to give dogs, cats a break or a few days or longer. So far, my houses got through three or four dogs to homes, to new homes, not farms. And so I'm looking forward to this ordinance and taking care of our pets in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Any other comments? Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Keefe, I support the spirit of the motion. I have a question for the, the county attorney. Madam Chair.
Please.
What, if this ordinance, if this motion passes, we'll have a, a public hearing, and then the ordinance will go into effect, correct?
If the board adopts the ordinance, yes.
Ma'am?
If the board adopts the ordinance, yes. It will go into effect.
And so my, my concern with this overall is that there's one business, non-corporated Leon County, that's currently operating. Has there been any infractions against this business, like legally, you know, recently?
Do we know, Mr. County Administrator?
I, I have no knowledge or information about that.
So, so my concern here is this, is that right now we have a business in unincorporated Leon County that's operating legally and has had no infractions, and we are now proposing an ordinance which will change the way in which that they can operate, right? I support the spirit of the, I support the spirit of the motion. My concern here is that now this is a blind side to its, to the business, right? And so I would like to be able to give some corner, some sort of, you know, measure or I guess a heads up, we would say, to let them know that, hey, this is changing, you know, and hopefully this is something that we can, out of respect, you know, for how they operate, if that makes sense?
Sure. Point of information, if you want, if you don't mind on it. We have in the report, and staff has already been in contact with that one company, organization. They've already talked to them about this, and they are, if it's voted on and approved, I believe it goes into effect in February. And so staff has already contacted and talked about working with that one supplier that sells a lot more than just rabbits. It's a pet supply store. To work with them and rescue organizations to transition between a possible passing of it in December and the enactment in February.
Okay, thank you. Madam Attorney, do we have any legal implications if they, if we pass this ordinance on the business, if they want to take, you know, I don't know, like legal action against the county because we passed an ordinance that now changes the way they operate?
Yes, please.
No. Local and state and federal governments change business regulations all the time, and prospectively businesses have to comply with those. That happens regularly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. And it does indicate in the report that they have been in contact with that one business in unincorporated Leon County. Any other? We're on our, your own business, number 22, public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 4 to prohibit the sale, retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits. This is to be on the agenda in December for the first public hearing.
Why are we doing it? I mean, what's this purpose?
It was raised in one of our previous meetings. We, we voted to have staff look at it and bring it back, and that's what they've done. That's what they've done today.
So.
So the public hearing would be scheduled, the first one, in December.
So we're trying to encourage the giveaway of dogs and cats versus the sale of dogs and cats?
No, prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits.
We just strictly want to gift them?
If you'd like, I could, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I might, Commissioner Proctor, during our last meeting, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Wait, hold on, hold on a second. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let the county administrator respond to that.
Thank you. Just broader overview, Commissioner Proctor, it's helpful, and I'd certainly defer to Commissioner O'Keefe. I know who brought this up at the last meeting. The board gave its direction to bring this back. The issue, I think, which is supported by the Humane Society, is intended to have the ethical sale of, of animals take place, and so this would not prohibit breeders from, from selling animals. This is only geared toward the retail establishment, sell, retail establishments, selling dogs, cats, and rabbits in the unincorporated area of the county. Our analysis indicates that there's only one such retail establishment that only sells rabbits currently. So again, this would simply prohibit that specific use, and as it stands today, for that one business that, that performs that one activity. And so that's what it, that's what it does. And again, happy to answer any questions that you might have, and this would schedule that ordinance for a public hearing, as the chair said, in December.
So we're just picking the.
Thank you, Mr. County.
We're just picking the rabbit retailer to put the rabbit man out of business just because we want to? Is that what you want to do? So why are we putting the rabbit man out of business?
Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Maddox?
Commissioner, Commissioner Proctor, I don't think it's necessarily, Madam Chair, if you don't mind me addressing.
Please.
Commissioner Proctor, I don't think it's about putting the rabbit man out of jail. What's happening is, is that there's a right way to breed and there's a wrong way to breed. What's happening is a lot of these companies that are, that are doing it for retail is that they're, they're abusing animals while breeding. And so what we're trying to do is to keep that from happening. So, you know, if they're doing it in an ethical way, we're not trying to stop them from doing it, but a lot of these companies are doing it unethically, and that's what we're trying to prevent. So it's, it's more about the, how ethical they're, they're actually breeding these rabbits, cats, dogs, things of that nature.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, unanimous. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator, agenda item number 23.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this item seeks the adoption of a resolution to establish the J.R. Alford Greenway Citizens Committee. Again, as you may recall from the establishment of the, the Micasuke Greenway Committee, this is consistent with our land management plan to convene this committee to review our management plan every 10 years. The item seeks the board appointment of a commissioner to serve on the committee, and so we are recommending options one and two that are before you with this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I would like to entertain a motion for staff recommendations, then we can hear comments if there are any.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Is there a second? Commissioner Minor, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor for the adoption of options one and two?
And number two seeks, seeks the appointment of one commissioner to serve.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. So before I carry that motion, then.
Madam Chair, I nominate Commissioner O'Keefe, second.
Okay, Madam Attorney, I've got a motion on the floor due for options one and two. Do we need to amend option two for the appointment of Commissioner O'Keefe? Right.
Will the maker and second of the motion agree to amend to provide?
You did.
I will, yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome.
I made, I made the, yeah.
And, and who seconded, you agreed to amend it? Okay, awesome. Okay. Thank you, Madam Attorney. So we have motion on the floor, accepting option one, and exception, accepting option two with the addition that Commissioner O'Keefe served as the county commissioner's appointment to that committee. Any further discussion? You accept, correct, Commissioner O'Keefe?
I accept. After this, I'm going to want Greenway Commissioner certification.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you so much. It passes unanimously. We are on your own business, number 24, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 24 seeks board direction on the nomination of eligible applicants to the governor for the appointment of two, three seats for the CSC of Leon County, the Children's Services Council of Leon County. There are current, there's currently one vacant seat on the CSC and two upcoming vacancies due to the expiration of terms for Paul Mitchell and Mark O'Brien on December 31st of 2024. Both Mr. Mitchell and Mr. O'Brien are eligible for and are seeking reappointment. The item before you provides 35 eligible applicants for your consideration. As you may recall, the board is required to nominate at least three people for each vacancy. In this case, it would be a total of nine. The last time the board sought to nominate candidates to the CSC, the board elected to forward all 20 eligible applicants to the governor for the three vacant seats at that time. This item provides both options for the board, either to nominate nine or to nominate all 35 eligible applicants or whatever the, the board seeks to, whatever direction the board seeks to provide with respect to the number of nominations. Again, we're seeking board direction. We're happy to answer any questions, and we have no items on this, or no speaker cards on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, we have options one, two, and three. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept option two, considering we would have met a mandate of submitting a minimum of nine applicants, but we don't have a maximum. So consistent with what we did in the past when we submitted all names, I would like for us to consider that this time and accept option two.
I'll make a motion for option two.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Caban, is there any discussion?
Well, Madam Chair.
Commissioner O'Keefe first, then Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just gonna, for the sake of orderliness, I'll just suggest this, and if it strikes the motion makers fancy, they can consider it. Otherwise, we just move forward. But I think it'd be a bit, a good bit cleaner for everyone who has already been on this list and has been before the governor and rejected once or rejected twice, I think it would make more sense to send only all the new applicants, but it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, just something I want to mention.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, we could have said all 35. I kind of like the idea of sending nine, but I, I can go with the motion on the floor. I do, I do see some names to hear that are, that are probably ones that I would, I would desire to, to send forth more so than others. But I, I agree with Commissioner O'Keefe as well. Do we know who has been sent and rejected, and do we want to filter those names? Now, like I said, I can go with the motion on the floor. I do have my favorites here, and I think it'd be very good for the CSC, knowing the board and understanding the balance of it, but I can, I can go where we are, but I did want to ask the question of staff, do we, do, do we know who's been sent already? Well, actually, I can, I can see who's been sent already. Of those names who've been sent, the previous nominated CSC applicant, applicants, all of those were rejected or just?
Yeah, they, they've given us a separate list of new applicants and the old ones.
Right. So those old applicants, we can, we can say they've been rejected, I guess, or they just weren't chosen?
I think they just weren't chosen, perhaps. You know, he can only select so many positions. We have two new individuals on the council that were just recently appointed within the last six months.
You know what? I'll second, Madam Chair. When I think about it, in the past, we've sent some, and they sent them back. It might be a better deal for us to send all 35, so I will, I will support the motion on the floor, but I, specifically because she's, she's one of us, and I know she did a great job. I really do advocate for, for Ally Richards to be a, a part of that. Brendan Williams is someone that I think would be very good for us as well. Dr. Bellamy, of course. I mean, that, again, there's some names on here that, that I think would be very good. And you, you being on the board, you can understand how that balance works. It would be very good to balance perspective, but ultimately, I know it's up to the governor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I'm going to go to the county administrator for a comment as well. Do we come back?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just if the, if the motion could be explicit to include the two members seeking reappointment to be included in that, that list, then I just wanted to make sure that that was explicit in the motion.
Yeah, they would be part of the 35. Yeah, I counted all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Those two would be, they make up the 35.
Thank you.
Who was it? Commissioner Proctor? Yeah, you made the motion, and it was second. Commissioner Proctor, I think you had a comment?
Ma'am, this is, no, no offense to you, Madam Chair, because you're our rep on the board, and were you not our rep on the board, you'd probably not be on the board. And it speaks to the preemptive posture of the governor's office to name and to reject the names which we sent the last time, like our recommendation is not good enough to make nomination for those persons of our county that would serve, but that ultimately we are just children, and our opinions and thoughts of who could be the leaders for this were supplanted, and our governor has to speak for us and preempts us on who is appointed. So this is a capitulation to the recognition of the governor's supplanting of us, that we really don't count. So we're trying to give the governor's office enough people, is this one good enough? This one good enough? Good enough. Can't sell cats and dogs, nothing like that, but we offer a whole bunch of people and sell them up before, before, before government. This is frustrating, and I was not an initial supporter of Children's Services Council because of the structure and that in a committee that the state's government puts no resources behind, but 100% of the monies that fund this comes from Leon County citizens, and yet the governor approves and superrules, and the state puts no money in something that 100% of the monies come from our taxpayers, and we get like, we get the right to nominate enough people for them to cherry pick who's good enough. So it's just a point of the democratic, the absence of democratic processes in this, but we're grateful that we get the chance to choose you. Otherwise, you know, hmm. So, so I, I, I want to, I'll be voting, but I'm voting with, with reservation and want for our scrivellers to capture that this is a vote of protest on my part, is with great disdain and protest, that our vote is not sufficient to name our citizens to this important board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And let me just make one point of clarification. The last group of individuals that we submitted to the governor, he, they weren't rejected in the sense that he sent them back. It was a time before that when we sent a group, and he sent them back saying, you know, submit additional names. What we did is we submitted additional applicants, but we sent the ones back to him that he had rejected, remember? So we sent all of them back to him. It's ultimately his decision, we just nominate, is ultimately going to be the governor's decision pursuant to the statute to select, select six people, which is why I, I wanted to accept option number two, to just send all of them back to him and let, let him make the decision.
We should send the entire county voting list to him.
Well, they didn't apply, though.
And he can send all 200,000 voters and let them decide.
They have to apply. We, we only can send him applicants. Okay. All right, so we got a motion on the floor to accept option two with the understanding that the two members that are on the board now, Paul Mitchell and Mark O'Brien, are part of that 35. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Thank you, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Is there anything?
We have, thank you, Madam Chair, we have two citizens to be heard on non-adjented items. First speaker, Mary Mayesha Mitchell.
Oh, okay. Ms. Mitchell. Yes, good to see you.
Good. I am here tonight because I want to.
Okay, get to the mic, yeah.
Okay. Mary Mayesha Mitchell, 1009 Ellington Court in the Springfield-Gripen Heights area, and I'm part of the neighborhood first planning process. We've been working with several of our communities in the Frenchtown area, in the Bond area, and in Griffin Heights to implement a neighborhood plan, and part of that plan had to do with food and security. And part of that plan had to do with food insecurity. Each of those communities have that same issue, and many of you have been working out to capacity with that issue already, and I recognize that, and have been part of the work you've been doing. I am part of the Greater Frenchtown Revitalization Council, which is a Front Porch Florida initiative established in nineteen ninety nine, and I'm working with the Tallahassee Food Network, which talks about providing affordable, sustainable, clean, and environmentally health, safety food for people who are in that area. So tonight, I want to speak to you about several things. One is about the IRA and the Justice Forty Initiative that has been put forth by the governors, not the governor necessarily, but for the people who are in our neighborhood, they want to see more of it, and so we went to the Biden Administration Justice Forty Initiatives to see how we can get money coming into Leon County. So we are very excited about that. I want to share some of the wonderful work that has been done. So in the first part, the EPA has several regions, and we are in region four, southeast. The southeast region has been severely neglected and still having problems, as we can see today, by many environmental issues. And so we wanted to discuss that and see how might we bring forth some resources into the community to address those things. And we've established a partnership over the years with people who want to do similar work and collaborate on important issues that matter in our community. And since food and security is a key aspect of the work, we started out looking at a community engagement grant that was put forth by organizations to bring capital into Leon County, particularly in the idea of resources that would address issues of pollution and marginalized communities, clean water, air quality, especially any type of environmental education and assessments that need to be done. So I just want to tell you that we're working on a community change grant now, and I'm asking you all support to help us further our work around food and security.
Is that my time? Oh, that's my time, okay.
I'm not done yet. So one of the things we recognize, I think you've talked about it tonight, is that many of our people don't understand the nature of the environment. They don't understand when to get educated around, when to move is in cases of a disaster. So we want to help them learn that. Disaster planning and mitigation is what we are all about. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
You know the speaker, Mr. County Administrator?
Yes, the next speaker, speaker is Michael Ladner.
Good evening. Michael Ladner, eighty-six, eighty-nine, Taff Road, down in Woodville. Last time we spoke was about June eleventh. It was about our home, new construction build, and the failures of the, the building code inspections. And I'd love to be able to give you good news, but we've been removing the windows and finding out that it's even worse than we thought. We had an engineer look at photographs and the plans, and we're still not sure, and I don't think DSEM is sure, how the slab was ever inspected properly, because the permit was issued after the slab was poured, and then inspection happened after the slab was poured. But we're missing a grade beam, which is a major portion that supports a load-bearing wall. So initially, I think back in June eleventh, we were thinking it was about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in repairs on a five hundred and forty thousand dollar home, and now we're pushing the limits of about four hundred thousand dollars in repairs. We're finding out the roof is improperly nailed also, so the roof is probably gonna have to, all the metal taken off, and the sheathing is gonna have to be renailed properly and then reinstalled. So we're, we're in worst-case situation than, than we ever thought. We actually talked to somebody who said, you're, you're beginning to be on the grounds of bulldozing and start over. But, I mean, if I had unlimited funds, we would have done that, but we're, we're reaching another issue. So that's where we are. All, all the siding's bad. We could have understood maybe a couple of things in the inspection process being overlooked or overseen, but when the slab's bad, the framing's bad, the sheathing's bad, the siding's bad, the roof's bad, it's just compounding, and we don't understand how so many failures happen on one home. Like the hardy siding panel, it's a four-by-ten section of siding. There's a pre-inspection before everything gets covered up. Each hardy panel should have between eighty-four and ninety-six nails. Ours has twelve nails. That should have been something somebody should have seen immediately. On a big span like a sliding glass door, you've got three king studs and three jack studs that are requirement. It's in the building code, it's black and white, it's easy to understand. We have three of the jack studs, but one king stud, and that should be something an inspector walks in, immediately sees a flag, says, hey, this is questionable. But I just wanted to give a update and let you know that, you know, we'd love to be paying county taxes at this point in time, since it's going on twenty-eight months on a twelve month build, but we're still not being assessed because the home can't pass code, pass completion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Now we are commissioners, we're into commission time discussion.
Um, I believe they've, this family's been here before, and we've had a conversation around it. Do we have anybody in particular? Staff, staff is working with this family, correct?
Yeah, let me defer to our county attorney, Commissioner Maddox.
So the Ladners have filed a claim with the county. It is under consideration by our insurer.
Okay.
Their attorney has contacted our insurer as well, so we consider ourselves to be in pre-litigation at this point. Would recommend that the board not discuss this matter.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Maddox. Ms., Madam County Attorney, other than that, do you have any other issues?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
I have nothing, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two proclamations, Madam Chair. The first one is Capitol City Chamber is celebrating its thirtieth anniversary. Actually, I have already celebrated, but I would like to present a proclamation to them on, at our next meeting. I'll make a motion for that.
Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes, thank you.
Thank you. Secondly, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask for a proclamation, given our next meeting, to all of the Med Week awardees. So if we could have their proclamation, that'd be my motion, and that would be all the awardees for Med Week.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Did you make the motion, Commissioner Maddox?
Yes, ma'am, that's my motion. It'd be individual proclamations for all the awardees.
For all the Med Week?
Yes, ma'am.
Including your daughter, who was one of our young-
Absolutely, including my baby, yeah.
Who was one of our young recipients, congratulations. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last but not least, I did want to take the opportunity to congratulate my eldest, Nyla Maddox, on being Miss Blue and Gold. She'll be honored at the halftime of the Rickert, or James S. Rickert's Homecoming Game, and so I'm so proud of her and what she's accomplished. Also, she was a awardee, Young Entrepreneur of the Year with, for Med Week. She's doing big things, and I'm so proud of her. So hopefully, her sister falls in her footsteps. I know she will, because she's already talking about how she's gonna do it bigger than her sister did it. So it's a special time in my, in my household, so, so proud to call her my, my baby. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Congratulations, Commissioner Maddox. She's a remarkable young lady. We're very proud of her.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Uh, nothing, just happy Halloween for everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple things here. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Ricardo Schneider of Danfoss Turbacoor. It just announced a couple hours ago, be a Tallahassee Democrat, he's retiring. So I know he's been a tireless advocate for the magnetics industry here in Tallahassee, and, and my hope is, now that he's retired, he'll be able to devote even more time to that. But, but I want to wish Mr. Schneider a great retirement. He's been an incredible advocate for the business community here in Tallahassee, and we're gonna miss him in that capacity, but hopefully, he will be, continue to be active with, with Leon County. Next, I wanted to let everybody know, I, this is just, I think it came out about an hour ago, Milton, Hurricane Milton is now a category five again, as it is going to hit the west coast of Florida. I'm sure you all have had the same type of thing. A lot of people in Leon County have reached out to us asking for ways they could help. Last week, Allison Tant, The Greg Tish Show, and the Sheriff's Office put together a supply drive for those affected by Hurricane Helene. And so I imagine they're gonna be doing something like that, very similar. Second Harvest is working on something now. But as you get requests to help, and that's one thing that's great about this community, is that we, we look out for each other, not just here in Leon County, but also throughout the state and country. So as we get more information about ways that people can help with the people that will be affected by Hurricane Milton, we'll need, we'll just keep an eye out for that, that's coming out soon. But if you have family and friends in that area, if they haven't left yet, please tell them to leave tonight. It's gonna be a very, very devastating hurricane. And then I just, I want to thank again, we talked about it in one of our agenda items, but I wanted to really give a shout out to our Leon County staff and our emergency management team, CMR team, Public Works, everyone else that was helping to coordinate preparation for and then response to Hurricane Helene. We really do have among the very best people in this Leon- The mayor about this earlier today, but I wanted to share it here as well. I want to thank the city of Tallahassee, the utility crews, and the, the city that helped coordinate multiple utility crews coming from all over the state and country to help us here after Hurricane Helene was a great coordination, and they did a good job. They did a really good job, and I want to make sure that they get their, their credit too. Madam Chair, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to thank everyone for your support on the, the cost and feasibility study for the storm shelter in Woodville. Really means a lot to have all of my colleagues' support as staff goes through that. Madam Chair, I spoke to the county administrator earlier. I have some questions in regards to accepted sewer in Woodville. If I may address to the county administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Administrator, Oak Ridge Road?
Yes.
Um, there's been, the road's been closed, I believe, for, I think, since early this summer. We know where we're at in the process.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Caban, let me ask Brent to come forward. He's ready to address those questions and provide any information that you'd like. Brent?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Brent. So I know that in emails, we've had that there's a, there's a rock formation or something that we've kind of found somewhere along, under Oak Ridge Road, is that accurate?
Yes, sir. Between Old Woodville Highway and Woodville Highway, I found a, a very hard rock formation that did not anticipate for construction. We are waiting on some specialized equipment, which should be here to the beginning of November, to complete that segment of the project, hopefully within two weeks.
Okay, so we don't need board direction, we don't need to hire any outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Awesome. When, how far off does that put us on our initial track from being done with the first phase?
They were able to go other phases to continue to work, so it's not gonna affect us, but still be a complete May twenty-
Perfect, so everything else is in motion, just holding up here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is it, do we know if it affects any, like, any of private roads or businesses?
No, sir.
Okay, awesome. Sweet, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Maisha Mitchell addressed this moments ago, and her ask, as I understand it, is that the Greater Frenchtown Revitalization Council desires to partner with Leon County in their application for EPA grant to deal with food insecurity and underserved areas. Their ask is that we, in the partnership, would be a fiscal agent, serving and assisting there. And federal government would need a agent much like a municipality like ours, and that's the ask. And I don't know, do we need to agenda that, or do we just make this motion, or what, how do we handle it?
Oh, Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Proctor, I don't think we would need any further direction, if that's the direction from the board, if there were any financial impacts down the road, which we took a look at this, we don't believe that there are, we'd certainly bring that back to the board, but for the purpose of applying for it and supporting it, I think that's all the direction we need.
Okay.
So just give the county administrator authorization to assist her, so we can entertain that motion.
So move, commissioners.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Can you repeat the motion?
Okay.
The motion is that the county partner with the Greater Frenchtown Revitalization Council to apply for a three million dollar grant through EPA, I think that's Environment Protection Agency, and that we would be service fiscal agent for this grant. That's the motion.
Any other comments? It's a partnership with that entity to pull down the grant, give the county administrator the authority, you know, to communicate, do what needs to be done with Ms. Mitchell, and he says if it's any fiscal impact, he would bring that back to the board. Okay? All right. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Anything else?
Yes, ma'am. And I also want to give a shout out and make sure that back in twenty nineteen, we took, undertook the task of looking at three-two-three-oh-four, that Ms. Mitchell was one of those persons at the table every step of the way and everything, and I want to note her work. And I don't think that, Ms. Mitchell, your, your name has been lifted up in that regard, I'll celebrate it, but we do thank you again for your work with three-two-three-oh-four. Commissioners, I've shared, well, no, I haven't shared with this side of the desk. Have I shared with y'all memo? Sorry about that. Commissioners, I offer and share with you copies of the memo that I've just shared with our county administrator. I cannot remember the recent report that I've reviewed, but it dealt with the HMDA Information Home Mortgage Disclosure Act, of which our area banks are required by law to file, to keep on file, applications for persons who are seeking home mortgages. This information is codified by various demographic, race, I think, income, and whether they turn down, whether they approve. And historically, the HMDA, or Home Mortgage Disclosure Act, information demonstrates a higher rate when all of the factors are, are lying, apples to apples, oranges to oranges, income to income. More typically than not, blacks are turned down three, if not four, to one. Some banks are higher than others. Given the fact that one of the candidates has said they want to build four million new homes, Tallahassee, in order to help be a part of the solution, we need to make sure that the climate, that the, whatever the new improved qualifying standards might be. And it's gonna have to be new qualifying standards for home ownership if we're gonna move the needle. The old-school, old-fashioned, old, uh, standards is still locking people out. So there has to be modification. And I would like to ask, it's been years, Mr. Administrator, since we have sat down and looked at that information, that we've looked at the areas, fourteen or fifteen banks that we have in our county. And it's not that we have any oversight, United States Government Banking Authority, but we have heard from area financial leaders with respect to policies, how they do things, why is this rate this way, why have you turned down five times more than another bank, why are you rejecting people five, five to one? I mean, it's just, and I think that it, it helps to set the climate, and it also helps us to understand the banking practices and what will close the gap of reaching home ownership. So my ask tonight, in light of my readiness thingy, memo to the county administrator, but I thought that as opposed to just sending to him and copying you, it was such significant weight, and weightedness, buying a house, and us pushing forward to help more people and us to set a climate for home ownership, in particular, after January twentieth of next year, I'm asking that we workshop and somehow or other- I'm asking that we workshop and somehow or other staff look at some of the variables I've mentioned in this memo, and that we have a sit-down to understand the temperature of home loan in our community that makes accessible homeownership. So I would make that as a motion that we would have a workshop on this issue.
Is there a second?
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Caban.
Aren't bank, isn't, aren't banking regulations managed federally?
Yeah.
So, so.
Let Mr. County, can you let the county administrator? Yeah.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, just a couple of things. Yes, and we have provided this type of information to the board in the past. As Commissioner Proctor noted, we'd be happy to update that information and provide that to the board. It could be, again, whatever the direction of the board is, I don't want to step on the motion, whatever the direction of the board is, we'd be happy to do it. But we would be happy to provide that if the board was interested in that prior to a workshop setting or anything like that, we could provide that information to the board. And I just wanted to note, too, of course, we will, the, obviously, the policies that have been discussed are very, are still speculative. However, we would still be positioning ourselves to take advantage of any programs that came down the pike ultimately. It may just, again, at this time, be a little speculative to assume what those might be. But again, happy to provide that information to the board if that's what the board would like, or, you know, engage in a workshop or whatever the board, whatever the interest, whatever the direction of the board might be.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just this thinking of and processing what, kind of what you were saying, Commissioner Proctor. Since we are very limited of what we can do as a board legislatively in regards to banking, I was thinking of an alternative. Maybe we do, you know, I don't know the right, the word of what we call it, but you know, a Saturday event where we, we get folks, the first time home buyers coming out, and we can kind of give some, you know, walk them through how to apply for, you know, a loan, something more educational like that, Commissioner Proctor. That's kind of what I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking. You get what I'm saying? So just, I'm trying to, I know where I'm trying to go with it, but anyways, yeah.
Okay.
We have that exact event coming up on October 19th, Commissioner.
There we go. There we go.
He's really good.
Yep. You read my mind. Thank you.
October 19th.
And it really is a great event.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Minor.
It's a great event.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Proctor, I think you bring up something important in terms of homeownership. The point that you're making about discrimination, possibly, possibly discrimination based on race, if that's taking place, that's illegal. Definitely illegal. One thing I would, one thing I'd want to have us consider is what the county administrator has suggested, which is maybe updating some of the numbers that he and his staff have produced in the past about homeownership in Leon County, barriers to homeownership, which might, which would include race, but also some of the other criteria, too. Income, down payment, credit ratings, that type of thing. Something that will help us get a sense for the barriers to homeownership in our community. And the reason why that's important now, and I'm glad that you brought this up, is because probably in January, perhaps, we might have something from the federal government being developed, as you mentioned. I thought it's 3 million, but maybe it's four in terms of that policy. And so I think it'd be helpful for us to have that type of updated analysis that we can take a look at, figure out of our Leon County residents, what are the main barriers toward them closing that gap and getting to a point of closing on a home? Right? I think that's important, because then that helps us get ready for whatever federal policy might come down the pike in the coming months after the election. So I would, I hear what you're saying, sir. I would, I would, I hope you would consider doing something a little bit different, which is to get that information, that updated analysis that the county administrator has talked about, getting that first, and then figuring out what our next step is after that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. So I think it's a good issue that you bring up, Commissioner Proctor. I think, Mr. Administrator, you said we've dug into this in the past. I think I remember us looking at it. But one thing I don't, I don't know if we have dug in is kind of a public-private partnership of sorts. How do we work with our banks to create different programs to incentivize homeownership? What are the best practices out there, if there are any that exist, that we don't have here in Leon County? It seems like I remember, I was having a conversation a while back with someone, and they were talking about how banks have come together to create some kind of trust where, where they were assisting with homeownership, whether it be down payment or something like that. But it wasn't, it wasn't as mainstream as I think you would normally hear about, but it was, it was a group of banks in a certain area or county that came together to, to help out with stuff like that. And so, you know, Commissioner Proctor, I like the road you're going down, and I'm wondering if there's some, some public-private partnerships prior to any policy being created that we could explore, that our local partners might be willing to get into with us. What I think the biggest barrier that I've heard in the field of work I'm in is, one, you know, especially when it comes to, when it comes to rent, it's three times, gotta make three times the rent. You know, when it comes to owning, you gotta save for a down payment, interest rates and things like that. So, Mr. Administrator, I know we've done exactly what, kind of what Commissioner Proctor's talking about, but have we ever looked at, maybe it's a status report, of what are best practices out there, innovative things other cities, counties, states are doing to address this problem that we have with, with homeownership?
Madam Chair, if it's the direction of the board, we'd be happy to include that in anything that came back to the board.
Have we done it before?
There, in terms of public-private partnerships, I'm not sure. I'd have to look at it, I guess. I can promise you, if something like this passes, there'll be ample interest in the private sector in exploring all potential partnerships with us.
So, Commissioner Proctor, I like to go down, just kind of, you know, first to see what's out there, and if we get the report back, we see some things that are interesting, interested, then we want to bring it back for a workshop or agenda item, we go down that road.
And I failed to mention that the, one of the presidential nominees is saying that federal government is going to boot, I think, $50,000 down payment of $25,000, I forget the amount. Now, that right there gets a whole lot of people ready and at the starting line. And if you got $50,000 to help people put down on a down payment of a house, even if your credit is, you know, low as mine, you know, that $50,000 all change the dynamic and alter, I mean, I'm just saying that that kind of speculative thought, as the county administrator says speculative, is there. But if you, you got a $50,000 partner coming to put some money down, that's got to bring you closer to the $25,000, excuse me, $25,000. That's why I got a aide, y'all. I'm looking at my aides and shaking their heads, it's $25,000. But if a $25,000 money, which probably amateurized over the duration, I'll put on the back end of a 30-year loan, I imagine, this is helpful. But we've got to, in my opinion, prepare ourselves to be a partner. And then the other component for which, listening to the language of what's, communities that are ready, that's got a program, that's ready, they're going to be first out the block, and the federal government is going to be looking for partners to partner with communities that got their stuff together. There's no reason for us not to have ours together. And if we certainly come Friday morning, probably going to have some of the lowest property value in the Southeastern United States, and going to need a hell of a lot more housing come Friday morning.
Okay, but Commissioner Proctor, why don't we do this?
But we're in Leon County.
The motion on the floor is for a workshop, right? So why don't we look at an agenda item coming back to see where we are? They've already brought one, and maybe amend it up to date?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then once it comes back, we can always look at public-private partnerships. We'll know more about the political state, whether or not there's going to be something coming down the pike to, to deal with over $1 million, $7 million in affordable housing money to the various states. But right now, I think an agenda item would put us in the posture that you're talking about.
Very good.
So will you, who made the motion?
I accept your advisement, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Minor's advisement.
Okay.
Will that public-private partnership piece be in the part of the agenda item, please?
Absolutely, and I just wanted to assure the board, I know you've seen this before, with how quickly we're able to stand up programs.
Oh, absolutely.
Keep that in mind.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you. I was the second on this. Just want to make sure that that information. Thank you. As the second on this motion, I just want to make sure the information will include application and denial rates by race and ethnicity.
Well, the HMDA data has that. It is required by law that they keep that on race and gender and blah, blah. So, and also for the question that was raised, that we're not the federal government, we're not. But the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act is required for local banks to have that, and any citizen private can go and request that at any time from a bank. And it's for the local advantage and knowledge. It's, it's a local policy effort to spur review, and in that review, that communities hold accountable institutions. So it's set that, that way, and I think it comes out of the 1977 Community Reinvestment Act, which Congress passed, to revitalize Americans in our cities.
Okay. I think we've got it, Commissioner Proctor. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Caban.
Can we just repeat the motion? Like, what is, we had a lot of chatter in regards to it. Can we just repeat the mo?
Okay, we, Commissioner Proctor is asking for an agenda item to come back. At first, it was for the workshop, but now it's amended and seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe for an agenda item to come back, to look at local financing with the banking institutions here in Leon County, whether it's redlining, any indications of discrimination based on prohibited factors, age, race, sex, national origin, I'll just say prohibitive, prohibitive factors. And it was one other aspect, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Commissioner Proctor, I hope you'll consider also the barriers to homeownership.
The barriers, absolutely.
So this is just like?
You're going to address barriers to homeownership.
So this is like a status report?
So the whole nine yards for the most part.
So this is a status report, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, an agenda item.
I'm sorry.
You said it's an agenda item, Madam Chair?
Yes, an agenda item to come back. And then from that, I think we would be well informed, and then we'll know what next step to take. And by that time, we might have some direction.
All informational, right, purposes? Okay.
All pertinent information. We know that they're totally qualified to do that. Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Anything further?
Further, I have a request for a resolution recognizing Florida M. University for the, I think, six years, is it six years in a row being the nation's number one HBCU?
Oh, okay.
And included in that motion, I mean, in that resolution to recognize.
Proclamation.
Their ascending from number 91 to the number 81-ranked public university in the nation. Motion.
Your proclamation is there, second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I say to our citizens of Leon County, we thank God for sparing us another storm. We thank God for the break that we received last, last week with Helene, and we thank God for what hopefully will be sparing our community from the storm called Milton, and for the citizens of Florida who are facing grave dangers. Our prayers, thoughts, our communities open to sharing what we can at this time. And we just encourage everyone to stay prayerful and empathetic, supportive of our friends, our neighbors, our relatives in various parts of the state. This really is a time for prayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Vice Chair Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate the President of the United States. He got to meet you this week.
He got to meet him.
And I'm sure, sure he went home and told the First Lady.
He did.
I met a magnificent lady in Tallahassee, Florida, when I got off the plane, and I thought to myself, man, I'm a lucky guy. Second, I do, Dr. Robinson, Dr. Temple Robinson, reached out to me from Bond Community Health Center. They're going to be celebrating their 40th anniversary at Bond, coming up in the next few weeks, I think it's early November. And in 2019, when they celebrated their 35th anniversary, the county sponsored them to the tune of about $3,500, this event. I forget how our policy, I know I've been the one that's like been mean about it, but like, is that, how do we got, how do we go about that if we want to consider that?
Mr. County Administrator.
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think the way, and the attorney can help me out here, too, I think the way you would do that is just, you would give us the direction to provide the sponsorship and the amount that you all determined to be appropriate, to give the county attorney, to give the county administrator the authority to execute a budget amendment from contingency.
This is important.
Yeah, but to also include in the motion to give me the authorization to execute a budget amendment from general fund contingency and that amount. And I believe it would probably have to be unanimous. Yes.
So I would, I'm normally really cautious about this, you guys, I understand, but this is the Bond Community Health Center. This is an established organization. This is an amount that we, this board, has approved previously, five years ago, for $3,500 sponsorship. So I would, I mean, I'll make a motion, y'all can chew on it if you want to.
I gotta stand up on this, oh, let me get a drum roll.
I don't want to put anybody in a bad spot, though, okay? So like, I'm gonna, I'll make a motion to give.
I need to film this. Go ahead, I got you.
Proctor is an antagonist. I'm going to put, I'll give, make a motion to allow the county administrator the ability to do that, $3,500 sponsorship, should the board want to do that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Praise this man.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support the motion. I support the motion. And I think it's, I think it's a worthy expense, there's precedent for it, it's the Bond Community Health Center. We did, though, set a process, though, that, I'm voting for it. But we did set a process that requests like this would have to come back as an agenda item at a subsequent county commission meeting with the analysis and, you know, the, basically the evaluation of the staff on it.
The max is 2,500, right? Anything over 2,500, I believe it was.
I don't remember what the threshold was.
I think we set a threshold. Listen.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Too many people talking at one time, please, please. Okay, Commissioner Minor.
So I'm voting for it. I'm voting for it. But I just, I wanted to recognize that, I don't want us to leave that process aside. I think that was a, Commissioner Welch, you proposed that, and I agree with it.
I just don't remember what it was.
And I think we need to stick to that.
Sure.
99% of the time, right? But I'm going to support the motion, because I think it's Bond, as you said, but I don't want us to forget about that policy that we rightly set forth, which I think is helpful for us to make sure we have, you know, proper written up things for our agenda items to come back for expenditure requests. So I'm voting for it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Welch, I'm going.
I just don't remember if we set a limit on it or what. This is, has to come back, I mean, this is November 8th or something like that, since before we meet again. If we want, if we, if I advocated for a policy that we had to have an agenda item, I want to stick to that policy more than anybody. So if it can't fly, it can't fly. It was brought up to me like in the last few days, so it's before the next meeting. So I do not want to go against my own suggestion as a precedent. I'm just saying this because the Bond Community Health Center is an organization that we all know, we know this money, where this money's going, it's not something we're not familiar with or anything like that, so, and it's been done before, there's a precedent for it. So if we have to waive the rules because of those mitigating factors, I don't know, but I do want us to be consistent, and I want to be consistent, and I want to be up above board, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. You're good. Mr. County Administrator, want to make a comment, please?
Quick, quick clarification. Yes, you did review this issue, you reaffirmed an existing policy, you didn't change, you didn't establish threshold. Your existing policy that's been in place for a long time requires that you have an[1790.24] been in place for a long time requires that you have an agenda item unless you do what you just did, which would require it to be a unanimous vote at a board meeting tonight.
Under the existing policy, the amount is not 2,500, it is zero. So the normal policy is to have an agenda item no matter the amount, unless the board does what it's doing now. There was, there was a discussion of changing it, but then there was a realization, the policy, the current policy already requires it at zero, there was no movement on that.
Thank you, Madam County Attorney, Commissioner Caban, then Commissioner O'Keefe.
I just want to let the record reflect, everyone in this room has gotten a freebie here, and I have not used my freebie, I have not used that card yet, just so y'all know. And so when I pull that for an event in Woodville, I'm looking at all you guys, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Caban, Commissioner O'Keefe.
This is a worthy cause, but I want to start by, let's just be clear, in my opinion, there's no policy. We did this for like, six months, we finally pulled it back for a few meetings, we're going to waive policy, we're waiving policy, our practice is this, and I think that's fine now, I can't, I've come around to it. And in fact, sometime earlier this year, in an effort to try to rein it in, I voted against a request, that was a good request, it was just to try to rein this in, it was Madam Chairwoman's, and now that we're, basically, we're going to do this, I want to apologize for that, because this is what we're going to do, this is our practice, it's worldwide, it's worthy causes, and so that's fine. I do, it's a worthwhile cause, I just want to, it's not exactly the same, but a month ago, I sat up here and took it hard as benevolent Commissioner O'Keefe for trying to do something in my district, I'm still going to support this, this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox, last comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it was slightly different, though, Commissioner O'Keefe, because you were trying to use your, yeah, but we ain't going to go there. I think, is this meeting adjourned? No, we all make good points, but I do want to say, though, y'all, I do believe, the policy is the policy, I like the road we're going down, and this is an established organization, and an established event, and we know what's going on with it, right? I do believe that we do have a limited amount of money in contingency, I will say that first point. Second point is, we do have to be somewhat considerate of the organizations that we're dealing with, and the amount of money that we're talking about before we come here and don't, and want to approve something without having an agenda item. Bond, 3,500, okay, right, I can get there. But let's say bond at 35,000, then I may be looking at something different. So I think, I'm glad we have the flexibility to do this, but we only got $250,000, one, and that is, that is in case of any emergency, we got $250,000, that's what contingency's for. And two, I think we should, we should be very careful about the organizations that, or the requests that we consider when we do this, all right? That's all I got, Madam Chair. But I will, I will support the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, I'm sorry, somebody was saying.
You said I was the last speaker, so I should.
If you only talk one minute, I'll let you talk. Only one.
Well, I want to nominate Commissioner Welch to become a deacon at his church, now that we know he has a heart sitting up there. I commend you for this motion, and great call, all of that.
Absolutely.
Great. You're going to sleep well tonight, really going to sleep.
I'll sleep well overnight.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, it's certainly a great cause, a great, a great organization, and they provide services to, medical services to the least of these in our community, so it goes without saying that I will support it. But all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, it passes unanimously, thank you so much. Anything further, Commissioner Welch?
I don't think so, Madam Chair. I don't think so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioners, I'd like to ask for a proclamation for recognizing Veterans Day that will be presented to the veterans during Operation Thank, the Operation Thank You, because you know, we always feed the veterans in November. Okay, it's been moved, and second, for the proclamation, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. I'd like to also commend the county and Mr. Jelani Marks, and he's here in audience, for having received a state award for our Affordable Housing, Housing Program, and that award came after our last meeting, but today, so I think we owe him a round of applause. And we know that we've got a grave housing shortage here for those in the low socioeconomic status, for rental housing, and so, great job, and we just have to keep up the good work.
Madam Chair, he's a District Two resident, I also just want to say that.
Madam Chair, if I might, just, I just, I can't, I can't let this.
Just comments.
Yeah, I won't let this, I can't let this pass, he's done a great job with our Affordable Housing Committee and everything, he's, he's been absolutely excellent, but I actually wanted to break up, too, just how extraordinary it is that we, time and time again, bring young talent in, develop that talent, and they become leaders in the state when it comes to government and public administration. Just to, just to show you, just by folks here in the crowd, how many people in our, in the crowd today started their careers right here in Leon County? Look at all those folks, right here in Leon County, and our government started right here, and now they're amongst the brass of our, of our organization, and I've watched some of these folks grow from intern to now leaders in our organization, and they're not just, they're not just given these roles, they're legit, so I wanted to commend the county administrator for being able to recognize talent and bringing it here and keeping it here in Leon County, I think that's an extraordinary thing, without blowing up his head too much, but then the development of the talent once they get here is absolutely tremendous. Last I'll say, Madam Chair, is, I don't know if this is normal, but I know in my line of business, what I do, you don't see folks join your organization and stay long enough to become leadership. The best part about it is, these folks joined our organization as young people, and stayed around long enough, and trusted the system long enough, in order to be developed to be now leaders. That's a, that's a huge testament to the kind of leadership that we have here, we've had here for a long time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, and I deto, everything that you said, so, and having said that, I also want to commend our county administrator for having been selected by Florida State University as one of his outstanding graduates, outstanding alumni from Florida State, so I think we deserve to give him a round of applause as well, he's very modest.
Evidently, they didn't check the transcript.
Okay, and lastly, I've got, and I'm going to pass these around, if you, I only, I only have three, if you will look.
She has three.
Earlier this year, Commissioners, we approved renaming the Leon County Courthouse for Honorable Judge Augustus Akins in November. Now, it'll take place in November, I don't have the actual date, but I think it's the 22nd.
Hold on, that's Thanksgiving, ain't it?
In November, the 22nd. And I recently received a proposal from Ken Casia, he's a sculptor, and he's a former United States Attorney, and he actually clerked the Judge Hatchet at the 11th Circuit, at the district court here, and he, he makes bronze busts of judges, and what you've got is a brochure that shows what President Reagan and different presidents, and he actually did a bronze bust of Judge Hatchet, Judge Joseph Hatchet, and it's sitting, if you go in the federal courthouse, it's named after Judge Hatchet, Hatchet is in the federal courthouse. Well, anyway, he's also sculptured six of the last seven presidents' sculpture as well, including Judge, federal Judge Hatchet. So what I'm doing is bringing a request before the board tonight, Commissioner Welch, I would like to have an unveiling of a bust for Judge Akins, who is the longest-serving judge in this circuit, okay? And I would like to have a bust of him unveiled at our November ceremony, naming the courthouse, the Augustus G. Akins courthouse. So moved. Now, this is not agendaed, and I know our policy, that it would need to come back as an agenda item, okay? And I, and I think at this party, it would need to be a unanimous vote, however, what I'm asking for is a motion to authorize the county administrator to provide funding from the General Contingency Fund to support this bust, and the dollar amount wouldn't exceed, based on Mr. Casia, wouldn't exceed $20,000, it'd be somewhere between 18 and $20,000. However, it could be situated in the rotunda down, downstairs on first floor, it would be an everlasting, I think, commemorative sculpture from, from the county, and like I say, this just came to my attention, if I had known it back when we voted, I would have raised it, asked it to come back as an agenda item, but I'm prohibited from, from doing so. So what I'd like to do is give the county administrator the authority to provide, provide funding for this from the General Contingency Fund, Mr. Casia has assured me that he could have it completed, and it would be part of that ceremony and the unveiling and the naming of the courthouse next month in November.
Madam Chair, given, so moved, I think, I think it's a worthy thing that you're asking for, it's not for an organization, it's for a bust that's worthwhile, for this courthouse that will display Augustus Akins and represent him and his name in this courthouse, so I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, is there a second? And it would be bronze, it's bronze, it's everlasting.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Caban, discussion?
Madam Chair, can you repeat the projected cost of this?
Somewhere, it wouldn't exceed 20,000, between 18 and 20,000 for the bust, and of course, he would be working on an accelerated process, this is October, to have it completed, and then we would do the unveiling in November when we name the courthouse after Judge Akins. Commissioner, I'm sorry, any other questions, Commissioner Miners?
Madam Chair, I'm willing to listen to what my colleagues are saying, but I'd like to speak again towards the end, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, I can come back to you. Commissioner O'Keefe, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm all for a bust honoring Judge Akins, it's, certainly deserves all the honors we can give him. My concern here is, I don't know how much a bronze bust costs, I don't know if we would be overpaying, I don't know if, you know, it costs, I just don't know, I have no idea, I mean, I'm over here just Googling it, but I don't like to make decisions based on that, and so my concern, maybe it can be addressed somehow, is this artist, maybe a fantastic artist, but are they the highest-priced artist in Tallahassee or that? So I think a bronze bust is due, I just want to make sure we're responsible in who we use and how we pay, or how much, is it the right, is it the average market-type price is my issue?
Thank you. Okay, on point, Commissioner Maddox.
I think, I think I can, I think I can split the baby on this one. If we committed to it today, agenda item comes back at our next meeting with bids for it, I guess, or we can look at the, no, okay, if we looked at the cost and all that kind of stuff, it came back, but we committed to doing it today, but we talked about the cost later at the next meeting, could a replica or a model of it be placed there for, for folks? Because what I don't want is, I don't, I don't want this to be a 3-4 and not pass, or even a 6-1 and not pass, because I think we all think that Judge Akins deserves that a bust or something to that nature in our rotunda, representing the fact that this is a courthouse that's named in his honor. But I do understand some of the reservations, I just spoke on it myself, of, of, okay, this is, this is 20,000, this ain't five grand, I think that the difference that I'm, I'm seeing here is that this is for a piece of art that's going inside of our courthouse, it's not given to an organization for an event, so that's why I can get there, but if others can't get there, we see this ain't going the way we want it to, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to vote where this doesn't pass, is what I'm saying. So, as we get through this conversation, I may get to a point that, that I want to amend my, my motion to get it somewhere else, if I feel like, if anyone feels like they're not ready to move on this today.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Welch, and then Commissioner Caban.
Surprised, Madam Chair, I'm not going to be able to get on board with this, not like this. Here's my problem, personally, I think that's, this is an exorbitant amount of money to pay for something like that, without a bid, without a process, we have a Master Craftsman Studio at FSU that does all of the sculptures you see at FSU, that is done by students and by, led by very experienced faculty, I know Mr. Sakaya is a former attorney, and this might be like a side hustle, but $20,000 is a lot of money, I cannot. And if we want to go back and pull the 3,500, so I'm consistent, we can do that, but I cannot, I cannot support a $20,000 purchase of a bust when we're naming the courthouse after the gentleman, which is a pretty distinct honor, in my opinion. Now, if Commissioner Maddox wants, we go down the, the idea of, let's bring back a agenda item with bids, let's get a bid from the Master Craftsman Studio and see how much, if we're even, maybe a hundred thousand dollars from them, and $20,000 is a deal, I don't know, but frankly, I think some of these are, you know, I mean, that's Donald Trump, I think, so.
That ain't Donald Trump.
It is supposed to be. I can't support it in its current form, Commissioner Maddox, if you wanted to make a, amend your motion to bring back an agenda item in November, that we could then, you know, you could put it up at another time, represent it somehow, I, I'm going to have a hard time supporting it if you need a unanimous vote, if you need just a majority vote, then I can vote no, but I can't, I can't support that.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Caban.
Commissioner Maddox, good idea, we have a workshop coming up October 22nd, why don't we just add it as an agenda item to the upcoming workshop, still gives plenty of time, we set the agenda.
Madam Attorney.
You do not allow public comment at your workshops, so you arguably, if you know you're going to be voting on this, should not put it on a workshop agenda, knowing that you're not going to get public comment on it.
What if it's just on our regular meeting agenda?
You don't have a regular meeting on October 22nd, it's only a workshop.
Oh, no, no, I thought he meant next month, didn't you mean a monthly, a November meeting?
No.
I meant, I meant the workshop.
Oh, the workshop, I see, I see.
For Madam Chair, just throwing that idea out there, I mean, previously, Commissioner Maddox had a special meeting when he was the chair last year, you can hold a special meeting with this as the agenda item whenever you'd like as well, I'd be happy to, you know, show up and be there to support for you, just an idea.
On point, did I understand, the chair to say that there's a, there's a statute of?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox.
Did I understand you to say there's a, there's a bust of?
Judge Hatchet at the federal court.
At the federal court, okay.
Yes, sir.
They got more money than us.
But what I would, what I would do, would like to do, Commissioner Maddox, and I appreciate your motion, if maybe you would amend it for just an agenda item to come back, allow the county administrator to maybe look at costs, the point was to try to unveil it at the time we named the courthouse, but if we can't do that, we can have an unveiling ceremony at a later date, once we're all informed, and I certainly understand, I just received this, you know, recently, since our last meeting, so I couldn't bring it up last month.
Madam Chair, where did the request come from?
Sir?
Where did the request come from?
Ken Casia.
Ken Casia made the request of us.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to, to bring it back at our next regular board meeting as an agenda item.
Okay, and if, Mr. County Administrator. Thank you. Any more discussion? Commissioner Miners?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'll vote for the motion to come back, so that we have a chance to take a look at what the, what the market price is for a bronze sculpture. And listen, there are, there are two items here. One is the reverence and the respect and the admiration we have with Judge Akins. That's separate from what this request is.
Yeah.
Right? And, and I'm, I'm supporting the motion now, because I, I think of us trying to vote on this today was a self-imposed urgency to try to get this vote done, so that we can get it done for the unveiling, right? That's a self-imposed date that we've given us, and I, I, we have to be responsible with $18,000 to $20,000 of taxpayer money that don't belong to us, and I, I'm very, when I hear about that kind of a cost, I think about the opportunity cost of how that money could be applied elsewhere in this community to help people that, that really need it. And again, these are two separate and tired things. Our respect for Judge Akins and our, and our need and desire to, to, to honor him, and we have with the courthouse naming, that's an entirely separate thing from whether we should spend $20,000, a taxpayer money, on a bronze sculpture. So I'm very, I'm skeptical about this, I want to, I'm going to vote for the agenda item to, agenda item to come back, but when it does come back, I'm going to take a look at what the county administrator and his team have done, to take a look at what the real cost, not saying that, that the sculptor's amount is, is off or wrong, but I want to have some, something in writing that shows me what the cost of a bronze sculpture is. And then I'm going to weigh that on the idea that this money does not belong to us, it belongs to the taxpayers, and what the opportunity cost of that $20,000 is, and what that $20,000 could do to further this community. Does even, does Judge Akins even want this? He might want to have that money spent on something to help further the community, and I don't know that, because we don't have an agenda item. So I'm voting for the agenda item to come back, when it does come back, I'm going to be very, I'm going to review it with a very critical eye, because this is a lot of money to ask to come from taxpayer dollars for something that we just, we need more information on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Chair, Sunday, not yesterday, day before yesterday, but last Sunday, Judge Akins was on the front row of Front Pugh Bethel AME Church when I spoke there, sermon titled "The Politics of God," and he's usually always either there or inside the altar rail, and it's hard to vote no against somebody you've seen, a Sunday school teacher. But I'm also reminded of, of, Ms. Mitchell, you've heard me say before, and thou should make no, no raven image alike of me. You've heard me say that before in church. Every student that attended Howard University, you walk in Founder's Library, and there is a picture of General Oliver Howard, the size of that screen, and you walk in the library, and he takes that wall, and everybody knows that picture that went to Howard. And that picture is more endearing to me, and memorable than a statue, which is cold bronze, like, dead. I'd love to see a huge picture, or at least look at a comparable cost, cost to commemorate Judge Akins, and I think it's very important that Judge Akins is a black man, actually a pretty handsome fellow, his wife thinks, and, you know, if you don't look that good, you ought to go down in bronze, you know, if you ain't got it, you're just all right. You know, everybody look about the same, even the good-looking guy, look at Clinton right next to that dude.
Who's that right there?
Obama, but that don't do nothing for him, you know what I mean?
I know him well.
Yeah. So this bronze ain't going to do nothing for Judge Akins in terms of, but there are more kids that would look up coming in this courthouse, and people coming in this courthouse, who if they saw a photograph of Judge Akins, they'd really see how good-looking he is, and it would be there for the ages. And when you go into Howard's library, you looking for General Oliver, and you're just like, he's a big old picture, and I think that emotionally, the distinction of who he is, what he represents, in our 200th year of this county, I would love to see consideration of a portrait, of a meaningful portrait, because you don't know these, you don't know Obama from on Trump, if, all of them look the same dead, you know, in this picture, and I would love to see something that's realistic and makes a greater impression on children and everybody coming in the courthouse, and a bronze statue just does not capture nor convey the heroacy of a man from Madison in his life legacy and being the person he's been. And I understand your heart, because you, you clerked for him, didn't you?
I worked with him, I didn't clerk.
You didn't clerk, you worked with Judge, yeah, wonderful, wonderful, and I'm not talking against it, and if the deal come down, and that's what you want, bronze, I'm a walk with you, but that which makes that indelible impression, for me, is not a statue but a photograph. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor, and I think you may raise a, a good point as well. So perhaps, Commissioner Maddox, if we could also add, third, the county administrator to check into maybe a beautiful portrait as well, as an alternative, you know, and we can look at it, to be appropriately hung in the rotunda in the courthouse on first floor.
I'm partial to the portrait, but if you want to bring both back, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, let the agenda item come back.
Okay.
That includes that as well.
For three hours and wait, you know.
Okay, thank you all, thank you for your, for your, for your discussion. No other comments, all those in favor of the agenda item coming back next month, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Is there anything further from any other commissioners for the good of the order?
Madam Chair, you've done a wonderful job, awesome, look at you, you've kilted and you've met the President of the United States, and you're a jolly good fellow, I declare.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Hearing nothing else, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.